Can you please remain standing for the panel?
Oh Canada, our home and native land. To bring it all in all our strength again. With open arms facing us, bound to the strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, be what heaven, glorious and green. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Hey everyone, I'm Lachlan. My name is Marie Glasser. I'm a city clerk for the City of Powder River. Tonight, we are here to witness the inaugural meeting of the Powder River City Council and the Powder River Regional District Board. With that, I call the inaugural meeting of the Powder River City Council to order and invite the chairman-elect Dr. Essie Paul up to the podium. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to be here today to represent my nation, the Longmont people. I want to congratulate each and every one of the new that elected to the council. It's a real honor. I know most of you, and especially today, for Moza. I raise my hands to you and wish you luck to be... It's a challenge, I know what it's like to be in this position. Any position in leadership is always difficult and challenging. We're all behind you and wish you the very best. That we will continue to have a relationship with Mayor and council. It's been good the last few years. It's wonderful that we can all work together and, you know, try to reach a good goal and future for the people of Powder River and for SLAM. So, thank you all. I just want to offer a short prayer. If you don't want to stand, please. Oh Creator, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for this event. We ask you to bless each and every one that is in this position and who we honor today. We ask you Creator to watch over all of the decisions and the challenges and the successes of the people that are in this honored positions. We ask you to bless each and every one of the families. We ask for peace among all people. We ask you Creator to be there for each and every one of us for all this way. Thank you. Judgment done. I raise my hands to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next, I would like to invite Reverend Karen Reed to the podium.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Dr. Paul. Let's start with a prayer. God, we begin this night as another chapter of the life of our city and regional district. We've been grateful in having Stuart and others gather us on the past wire and restored especially for nine good years with him at the helm. And now, whether it be for the first time as mayor, or for Russell, or for someone turning by affirmation, or coming back after some time away, may each of them believe and sense that they are indeed valued members of our community or district. We look forward to being with them over the next three years. May Dave and each of the council members feel that they have the support of the community as they tackle the affairs that will affect us all. May Colin and the members of the regional district sense that they are working for all with those that they serve. And may we all, as community or district of Powder River, rest assured that we can, if we wish it, all work together in peace and harmony and for the good of everyone. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Reed. May you stay in your prayer. So, good evening. With the city council holds the office, the councillors and the mayor-elect will take their post of office and then they will have the business partner meeting. Following adjournment of that, we'll be in a very, very short break and then we will proceed with the regional board and all of them. Okay? So, we'll now proceed with the city council holds the office to be administered by Justice of the Peace Bryna Harry. So, worship if you'd like to come out. We'll proceed with the councillors-elect first, and the first one is Russell Brewer.
So then, do you, Russell George Wayne Brewer, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Next, Debra.
Do you, Deborah, and Dees solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter? I do.
Maggie Hathaway.
Do you, Margaret Jean Hathaway, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter? I do.
Margaret Richmond.
Do you, Margaret Karen Richmond, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter? I do. Thank you.
Chris McDonald.
Do you, Christopher Willie McDonald, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Thank you.
Jim Paul.
Do you, James Garnett, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Congratulations, councillors. Next, Mayor-elect Dave Pomosa.
Do you, David John Pomosa, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of mayor for the City of Powder River to which you have been elected, that you did not by yourself or any other person knowingly contribute the local government act respecting vote by or intimidation in relation to your election to the office, that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in private public matters? And that as required by the community charter, you will disclose any direct or indirect community interests you have in matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do. And I will.
So, Mal, sir.
Yes, your worship.
How do you want me to start? Do I start by address or do I start with...
We're just, uh, lead different down there, and our number five on the agenda, which is the mayor's inaugural address. And you may wish to step up the podium maybe to make a difference.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure the audience can see you, see.
I think, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Fathers, mother, friends, fellow councillors, regional district, children singing for CMP. We respect and honor the SLAM and the traditional territories of which we're only are meeting today. I do have a little bit of a long speech and I'll make sure I don't make this a habit, but that being said, I'm gonna carry on. Welcome. It was truly a humbling experience for me to be standing here today as mayor of the City of Powder. My commitment to each of you is to give my all to the responsibilities of the office of mayor and to work collaboratively with the council and the community to build upon the successes of the past and to chart new courses where necessary to ensure a strong future for Powder River residents and businesses. I want to start my remarks with an expression of sincere appreciation from the community for the 12 years of dedication Stuart Elsgar gave to the City of Powder River as mayor. Mr. Elsgar was a real ambassador for our city. During his term in office, he helped the community realize a number of milestones, including the accord of the SLAM and the First Nation, the incorporation of the City of Powder River, and the recognition of Powder River as a cultural capital of Canada. His founding history is a part of the fabric of our community, and Stuart's 12 years of service as mayor will be remembered as an important part of the legacy of his family's contribution to building our community. I take my hat off to Mr. Elsgar. And thank you, Father. On behalf of the city council, on behalf of council and the community, we are saying thank you to our youngest member of council, Aaron Pinch, as he focuses his attention on family and work. We have watched Aaron grow as a young professional during his term in office. Council discussions and decisions have benefited from the insight that Aaron has contributed from his perspective as a young author and a young man. We wish Aaron success on his life journey and expect to see him in public office again in the near future. To Aaron Pinch. Partnership, collaboration, compromise, creative thinking, and commitment to achieving results have all become important words in the vocabulary of the community leaders. This is the language that we will use as the underpinning upon which council will make to go forward on decisions for our community and our region. Incorporating these ideas into how we do business will help us address our challenges and take advantage of our opportunities. The analogy, a rising tide led itself ships, holds true for our community. If we strengthen our economy, then the rising tide will extend its benefits to factories, businesses, community services, and organizations. There are many groups working to ensure a strong local economy, PREDS, Community Futures, Chamber of Commerce, Careerland, VIU, School District 47, Tourism Power, just to name a few. I want to send a message, Powder River is open for business and investment, and that we have a coordinated effort to achieve this. To this end, I will establish a various economic development advisory committee that will bring to the city hall a commitment to encourage and support business development. Initially, councillors Dean and McDonald will hold portfolio responsibilities to support this initiative and will serve as council members to the mayor's committee. I will work with council and various community organizations over the next month or so to develop a framework for the advisory committee which will be fully implemented in the new year. We have the council with a diverse background, experience, and skill sets. These attributes will contribute to the city's efforts to take advantage of the many opportunities we will have to address over the next three years. To this end, I have delegated to council members the following responsibilities in the portfolio: Russell, Perk, Arts, Recreation, and Communities in Bloom, Planning, Environment, and Life. Johnson, Deadee, Arts, Culture, Library, Corporate and Community Industrial Development, Airport, Small Business, Agriculture, Forests and Lands, and Shared Services Council, and Government Assistance. Tranda, Councillor Maggie Hathaway, Public Safety, and Emergency Planning. Tourism, which includes Regular, Cultural, Medical, Ecology, and Adventure. Rinali Shion, Rock and Batman, Community Health Services, which includes Social Housing, Affordable Housing, Homelessness, Social Development, Accessibility, Inclusiveness, Seniors, Community Health and Citizen Services, Museum of Heritage, Sustainable Planning. Councillor McDonald, Finance, Corporate and Community Industrial Development, Airport, Small Business, Agriculture, Forests and Lands, and Shared Council of Deadee, and Energy System. Harvest, Berries, Water, and Zonal. Councillor Hong, Children and Youth Relations, Healthcare, Health and Wellness Sport, Public Works, Infrastructure, Water Quality. The following council committee appointments require a resolution from council that will be brought forward at the December 15th council meeting and recommendations that I'm going to be making are: Except Emergency Executive Committee Chair myself, Liquid Waste Management and Steering State Street Committee, Councillor Brewer, De, Leishman, Hathaway, McDonald, Paul, and I'll do my best I can. Liquid Waste Management and Technical Advisory State Street Committee Chair, Councillor Hong, Western Water Project, Councillor McDonald Chair, Hathaway, and Brewer. The following council liaison representative appointments to external committees groups require a resolution from council that will be brought forward at the December 15th council meeting. Intergovernmental Plan Steering Committee, that's the third, Powder River Community Forest, myself. Powder River Regional Economic Development Society, Councillor De, and McDonald. Community Advisory Group to Westwood Stillwater and Island Timbers, Councillor De. Council's Community Stakeholder Committee, Councillor De. Association of Bank and Broad and Coastal Communities, Councillor De. Powder River Tourism and Tourism Hathaway. Community Futures Development Corporation, Councillor De. Community Sustainability Planning Committee, Councillor McDonald. Fairy Advisory Committee, Councillor De. Strategic Planning Committee chaired by Councillor De. There are some aspects of the portfolio system that need sorting out immediately, reporting to council committee of the whole, staff support, and financial resources. These and other opportunities to strengthen the portfolio responsibilities of council will be addressed with the next step. Council will also have an opportunity to identify a community structure that best suits the community and community needs and that will fit within the resources of the City of Powder River. We've all heard the phrase that it takes a whole community to reach a child. Same holds true for building a stronger economy in Powder. It will take a commitment of the whole community. I will be counting on each and every one of you to make a contribution towards our success. In closing, I want to point out to everyone that during the election campaign, I created a platform listing the specifics of what and what's that I wanted to accomplish with my council. I will do my very best to do just that. For 12 months' time, I would like to take the time to review that platform, engage where we are, and decide what we will need to be done to continue to move forward. Thank you for attending this evening, and I look forward to working with you all, council, community members, SLAM and the First Nation. community members, slalom of our nation, over the next three years. Thank you, and God bless you all. For now, number six presentation tonight. Come up, Mayor. First of all, we have a plaque for Mr. Stuart Elsgard, Mayor Stuart Elsgard, December eight to December two thousand and eleven. A game of big hat for Stuart. Counselor Mayor Pinch. There he is. Italian those kids almost threw me off of my speech. Lucky I had four of them myself, I was used to it. There you go, and thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
And God bless you, you're good.
Give it a try. I just really want to thank the council and the community. We've accomplished a lot in three years and I'm looking, I'm really looking forward to the next three, so welcome to the new faces and thank you, thank you for all putting your names forward.
A committee order?
We are in.
Oh, we are in a meeting, we are in order. You've got to have the most important order. Okay, so we have a resolution for the acting mayor rotation. And so I need a leader, a second. So Counselor Paul wins and Counselor McDonough seconds. So Counselor Paul, will you read out the, does he read out, will you read out the rotation, please?
I move that in accordance with section one thirty of the community charter, the acting mayor rotation for the remainder of two thousand and eleven and the year two thousand and twelve shall be as follows. December two thousand and eleven, Counselor Russell Brewer. January two thousand and twelve, Counselor Debbie D. February two thousand and twelve, Counselor Maggie Hathaway. March two thousand and twelve, Counselor Vernon Leishman. April two thousand and twelve, Counselor Chris McDonough. May two thousand and twelve, Counselor Jim Paul. June two thousand and twelve, Counselor Russell Brewer. July two thousand and twelve, Counselor Debbie D. August two thousand and twelve, Counselor Maggie Hathaway. September two thousand and twelve, Counselor Vernon Leishman. October two thousand and twelve, Counselor Chris McDonough. November two thousand and twelve, Counselor Jim Paul. And December two thousand and twelve, Counselor Russell Brewer. And further, if the designated acting mayor is unable to fulfill his or her responsibility, it will fall to the next in rotation.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Is there any question? Do you have none? Not quick?
And who is the second on that watch in your way?
Uh, Counselor McDonough?
Thank you.
So I'm calling for the question, there is none at all in favor? Pass to now, let's see, thank you. And further, uh, okay, next resolution appointment of municipal directors to regional board. So I need a mover. Counselor Dee, second there, that's a McDonough. Counselor Dee, which may be supreme.
I move that in accordance with section seven eighty-four and section seven eighty-six, the local government act, following members of council are appointed as municipal directors to the council regional board. Counselors Maggie Hathaway with four votes, Counselor Dee McDonald with three votes. The alternates shall be Counselor Russell Brewer with four votes, Counselor Vernon Leishman with the three votes.
Thank you. Have you heard that? A total of questions here. Any comments, questions by council? Here we go, none in favor? Impulse. Pass to now, this is an easy job. Okay, we're going to do the next, okay. No, we've got some more. I've got some more to do, I'll turn until I finish my agenda, right?
I believe you just have finished your agenda. Can you entertain a motion for adjournment?
Okay, and then I can do my recommendations, they're active.
Yes, if you have recommendations now, I mean.
That's what I thought, thank you. So this time, I would like to thank our musicians tonight, our singer from our own office, Melody Shaker. And the Schweitzer, Hawkeye, and Trillo. E Y Schweitzer of Chelo, Joshua Schweitzer. Um, Yan, Alan, Hawk, Hawk, or Mylenic, and their teacher, Alga, Terz, Inko. Thank you very much. And our writer and line-up teacher, where is he? There he is. Mr. George Thompson. And our CMP, Constable Chris Baker and Constable Jeff Pla. Caterers, David Boers and Robin Oyster. And a thank you to our city staff for their assistance in organizing this event, especially Kathy. And Kathy is retiring tomorrow.
Two days.
Two days, stand up, Kathy. Why am I moving? A juror, are you moving? Chris moves a juror, I have a second there. Maggie Hathaway, all in favor? Are you a juror?
Ladies and gentlemen, before we start the regional district meeting, I ask you to take a stretch, please, break in place while we... You've seen the municipal council's inaugural meeting. You'll see some subtle but important differences in the regional districts inaugural meeting. So if I could, right now, explain to you that none of our directors have been sworn in, nor has the chair been elected. You will see that happen tonight. So we would be remiss that the corporate administration, I'm saying congratulations, Mayor foremost in council, and hope you all well. What we will do tonight is again, we will call up our directors, both electoral and municipal, you've just seen municipal directors elected. They will be sworn in and then also their alternates, a bit of a difference in the regional district, we have alternates for each director. Some of our directors will also choose to swear an oath of allegiance. Then they will take their place at the table, and I'm telling you this because democracy is being well served. I will then convene an election of the chair, and I will be the acting chair on their behalf in the fact there is until the election of the chair, and then the meeting will pass to the newly elected chair. So I like to think this is a classically Canadian democratic moment, where an unelected official is actually in charge of a brief moment. And a former civil. So again, I'd like to call on Siri to swear in the director.
First one is Merrick Anderson. Do you, Merrick Craig Anderson solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been elected? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your election to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Thank you. And Minister Deo, of allegiance. Do you, Merrick Craig Anderson, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors?
I do.
And Patrick Bravison? Do you, Patrick James Bravison solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been elected? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your election to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
And you, Patrick James Bravison, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors? Stanley Gisborne? Do you, Stanley Gisborne, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been elected? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your election to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Maggie Hathaway? Do you, Margaret Jean Hathaway, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your employment to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Do you, Margaret Jean Hathaway, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors?
I do.
Do you, David William Murphy, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been elected? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your election to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
James Hall? Do you, James Garnet Hall, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your employment to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
And you, James Garnet Hall, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors?
I do.
Do you, Colleen Sidney Palmer, solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of director for the Power River Regional District to which you have been elected? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your election to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act...
And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Do you Colin Sidney Palmer, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors?
I do. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the police swearing in of the directors of the board and now the one to the alternate directors that will take the place of these directors to their honor. Ladies and gentlemen, might I present the new regional district?
First alternate is Ted Bellier.
Do you Charles Edward Bellier solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of alternate director for electoral area B of the Powell River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Thank you. And Russell George Wayne Rivers solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of Director for the Powell River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your appointment to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Berna Lee Schmidt?
Do you Berna Karen Lee Schmidt solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of Director for the Powell River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you have not by yourself or any other person knowingly contravened the Local Government Act respecting vote buying or intimidation in relation to your appointment to the office? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Sandra McMorran?
Do you Sandra McMorran solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of alternate director for electoral area D of the Powell River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Harold Barnes?
Do you Harold Bernard Robertson solemnly affirm that you are qualified to hold the office of alternate director for electoral area A of the Powell River Regional District to which you have been appointed? That you will faithfully perform the duties of your office and will not allow any private interest to influence your conduct in public matters? And that as required by the Local Government Act, you will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest you have in a matter and will not participate in the discussion of the matter and will not vote in respect of the matter?
I do.
Do you Harold Bernard Robertson, promise and swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and her heirs and successors?
I do. administrator to conduct the election of the board at this time. I would remind you that the nomination for Chair of the Board does not require a second, but simply a nomination. So for the first time, I call for nominations for Chair of the Powell River Regional District. Director Murphy?
I nominate Director Colin Palmer.
I recognize nomination for Director Colin Palmer. Nothing heard, I call for a second time for nominations for the position of Chair of the Board of the Powell River Regional District. Nothing heard, I call for a third time for nominations for Chair of the Board of the Powell River Regional District. None heard, it's my duty, I congratulate Chair Palmer on his acquisitions Chair of the Board.
Just a few words from myself, on this, Dr. Allison Paul, and your people at Sliamun, your worship, Dave Paul Moser, and anyone here tonight who is special guests and the members of the audience. Just want to talk about relationships first. We have a communications agreement with Sliamun, this board has, and I want to continue that with Chief Lieutenant Williams. But particularly want to say today, here this evening, that he and I grew back a long way, we grew back a long way with George Thompson. He used to do climate charts and contour maps in my classroom. It was very good. And I'm sure we're going to have a very, very, very good relationship, and I'm sure it's going to work very well with the board. So congratulations, and on your new council. I'd like to make sure everybody understands the makeup of this board, and I like these opportunities. On my left, I'm going to introduce the electoral directors first. On my left is Merrick Anderson from Las Higuita Island, and I think this is his fourth year.
Third term.
Third term, right, third term in office. So we're now enjoying the fact that he's back here with us. Director Murphy from Texada Island, and you're in your fifth term, okay? And then I've got on my right, Director Bravison, you're in your fourth term. And I can only say that Director Gisborne is starting his 25th year in local government. He's been Director for many years. I'm getting no embarrassment, this is my 21st year in local government. Congratulations to Director Hathaway, and congratulations to Director Palmer, they've both been at some of our meetings. And we operate under the Local Government Act, and you'll notice already that we elect the Chair, the Chair is not elected at large, neither we hold. And each Director is from a specific area, and we operate as a corporate board. And so we operate under the Local Government Act, and we have a lot of restrictions on what we can do. Our new Chief Administrative Officer, Mike Fraser, has been with us now for eight months, and we're delighted with what he's doing on our behalf with his staff, and we're also delighted that Brenda has been promoted to her new position. So just a few notes, this is not a long one, but we're going to go ahead. Okay, I just thought you might like to know what I think the board are going to be doing in 2012, what was looking ahead. And we've got some high priorities, and here's some of the activities that we think we're going to be heavily involved in in 2012. First of all, in January, we've arranged a community, community forum with the people at Sliamun, and also for the city, and we want to share our vision with them and our concerns and challenges within the region. The old Northside Fire Hall on Craig Road is gone, and we will consider awarding a contract on December the 15th for the construction of the new hall in 2012 to better serve residents and firefighters. And we also want to thank the commitment and dedication of the Northside volunteer fire department members, fire protection is continued in the fire district with interim arrangements. Also in January, we're going to start something very new, we're going to have a regional emergency management plan, rather than just one for the electoral areas, and a second one for the city, we've joined together. And we're going to reduce the duplication between the city and the regional district, which will provide greatly effectiveness and coordination and services to all the residents of the region before, during, and after emergencies. We're trying to reduce the amount of waste produced in this community, rather than setting it out, and we've already started a composting advisory committee, which will provide recommendations on whether centralized composting is viable on our route to sustainability. Also, the cemetery in Granbury and the one on Texada will receive improvements that will enhance these two sites and will provide a greater selection of ways to honor our ancestors. Due to an innovative financing arrangement by our previous board, our own regional hospital district will see a new complex care facility in Great Ground in 2012, under the project management of Vancouver Coastal Health Authority, and the ongoing participation of the hospital district on a project governance committee, and it's anticipated that that facility will open its doors in 2013. Powell River's region is famous for its natural beauty, and beginning in 2012, a new advisory committee will start the implementation of our regional parks and green space plan, and continue to enhance the work of many volunteers and landlords to make more of our green spaces accessible and protected. We're also taking note of the fact that the Powell River SPCA will open the doors of a new shelter in 2012, and the regional district will provide ongoing funding to help operate the facility. As board chair, it's part of my role to ensure that the regional district board is looking ahead and continually seeking ways to better serve our residents and taxpayers. Some areas of interest that might be considered are increasing transit services to electoral areas, ensuring that the coastal ferries better serve coastal residents, and the planned ferry fare increases are rolled back. And I'm very honored to lead a group of at least 13 regional districts in this province, working with the Premier and the Ministry of Transport to try and achieve that goal. Apart from our relationship with Sliamun, I'm also interested in developing a relationship with the Palooza Bank and Chief James Long, who I've had the pleasure of meeting already. And I think I'd like the board to seriously consider meeting with them and developing a communications agreement with Palooza. And also, once again, we want to work cooperatively with the city and all our partners throughout the region. So I thank you for your appointment to this office, and I'm looking forward to working with the board and the staff. Thank you very much. And the next item of business is the election of the Vice Chair, and there is a motion that is in the package under number five. Would someone like to move a second of that? Has anybody got a copy? No, okay, out of the way. The line of course, with existing practice, the position of the Vice Chair of the Powell River Regional Board for the period from December 6, 2011, to the first meeting of the board in December 2012, be assumed by directors other than the Chair on a rotating basis for two-month periods according to the alphabetic order of directors served. Someone like to move on? Move by Director Gisborne, second of my Director Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? I am opposed, motions carried. And now we move to the swearing in of our corporate administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you're aware, you hired me, I was both the Chief Administrative Officer and also the corporate administrator, and on your direction, tonight we will swear in during the background as your corporate administrator.
My friend the Patlin, having been appointed to the office of Chief Corporate Officer for the Powell River Regional District, do hereby promise and swear, I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the powers, duties, and functions of my office. I will treat all matters and information that comes to my attention as a result of my office in confidence. I have not received, nor will I receive or accept any payment or reward or promise of either in return for the exercise of my powers, duties, and functions, other than as permitted by the regional district. I will not allow my personal interest to conflict with the duties of my office, and I will comply with all policies and directives of the regional district and comply with all laws.
Mr. Chair? The appointment of the sign office, the motion is put forward. The appointment of the signing officers. Motion put forward is that designated signing officers of the Powell River Regional District are Chair Colin Palmer or Director Grabazan and the Chief Administrative Officer Matt Fraser or the Corporate Financial Officer Wyndham Green.
So may I move that? Director Anderson, seconded by Director Palmer. All in favor? I want to oppose. Motion is carried. I think that's all of this is. So we have adjourned.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I could explain the continuing civics lesson, we will now convene a traditionally very short Powell River Regional Hospital District Board. So I call that meeting to order, meaning the Powell River Regional Hospital District. Some of you will have an agenda. Swearing in of Directors is not necessary because the Directors of the Board are automatically Directors of the Hospital Board. I am, as before, required to do my duties to conduct an election of the Chair of the Hospital District Board. Directors, I call for the first time nominations for Chair of the Powell River Regional Hospital District. Director Anderson?
I'd like to nominate Colin Palmer.
I hear Colin Palmer, correct. Nothing heard. I call for the second time for nominations for Chair of the Powell River Regional Hospital District Board. Nothing heard. I call for a third and final time for nominations for Chair of the Powell River Regional Hospital District Board. None heard. I congratulate Director Palmer on becoming Chair of the Powell River Regional Hospital.
Can we move on to the election of the Vice Chair? Acting Chair.
Motion is that in accordance with existing practice, the position of the Acting Chair of the Powell River Regional Hospital Board for the period from December 6, 2011 to the first meeting of the Board in December 2012 will be assumed by the Directors other than the Chair on a rotating basis for two month periods according to the alphabetical order of Directors' ser names.
Is it moving? Moved by Director Murphy, seconded by Director Palmer. Any discussion? Carrying none. All in favor? All in opposed? Carry. Okay. The next item of business is the appointment of signing officers.
Chair, motion is that designated signing officers of the Powell River Regional Hospital District are Chair Colin Palmer or Director Patrick Grabazan and Chief Administrative Officer Matt Fraser or the Chief Financial Officer Wyndham Green.
Further motion? Sorry. Who's going to move this? Sorry. Director Hathaway, seconded by Director Gisborne. Further motion? All in favor? All in opposed? Carry. Not standing on business. We adjourn.
Excuse me. People, I just missed. I forgot I was staying when I had my shoot there. Reverend County. Please. And Reverend has a follow for their participation tonight. Thank you.